Also, current construction, MSP Architects Design Team. We're going out to public bid. Estimated construction start would be July 2016. And we're going to renovate 16,000 square feet of the first floor and roughly about 2,500 square feet of the second floor. On the rendering, the part that we're renovating on the second floor is the rose color. And of course, the other one is the colored area. Estimated construction completion is the summer of 2017. And the total budget is $12,288,103. Also on current construction projects, we're replacing the football field artificial surface. It's currently underway. The project is funded with the stadium reserve funds. As I said, the construction has already began. They've already ripped out the old turf last week. Total budget, $12,028,135. Upcoming construction projects, District Wide Security Monitoring System. This is a site plan of the LAC campus. And design covers all exterior entrances in heavy-use areas. We also have a maintenance and support assessment to be part of the design process for future maintenance. Total project budget is $10 million. District Wide Security Monitoring System for the PCC campus. Notice to proceed for the design was awarded to P2S in October 2015. And the project is expected to be approved by DSA in July of 2016. Begin public bid process July 2016. Award project construction in the fall of 2016 with a construction estimate to be completed by the summer of 2017. More upcoming projects. Right now, Steinberg Architects is working on design documents. We've submitted design documents in January 2016 with an estimated construction start of fall of 2016. Estimated construction completion is spring of 2018 with a total budget of $8,670,713. Another upcoming construction project, Building J Auditorium. SVA architects are working on the design. We're renovating the 37,000 gross square foot auditorium. We're actually adding about 14,000 gross square foot on the northwest corner for additional classrooms, offices, and storage, and the new elevator required for ADA access. We're also upgrading structural accessibility, fire life to meet current codes. DSA submission will be the summer of 2016. Expected approval from DSA is roughly around April 2017. Construction starts the summer of 2017 with a completion of spring of 2019. Total budget, $24,629,548. Upcoming projects, the outdoor kinesiology labs are going to be renovated, including the softball field, soccer fields, and tennis court. We're going to be addressing all the ADA access issues, lighting, and parking out there. And also, some of the fields may include artificial turf. More upcoming, this is an upcoming design project, so we're moving toward soliciting architects for the design for this project, but it's the Aquatic Center. And this is roughly the rendering that came out of a feasibility study that was done last year. So, construction of new 50 by 25-meter pool. Scope includes construction of support buildings of approximately 12,000 square feet to provide showers, lockers, storage, pool equipment, and office space. And then, the last update that I gave you, we, last year, we wanted to show you what projects that we've completed. And of course, this is Building V, the Math and Culinary Arts Building, that was completed in April of 2015. We had moved in in August of 2015 with a total project budget of $43,658,812. The budget savings to date on this project is $4,630,929. Moving on to other completed projects, the LAC Stormwater Runoff Compliance of Central Quad. Substantial completion was awarded in May 2015. The entire quad and walkway are currently open and being used by the public and our students. Total project budget for all the landscape was $13,140,000. Budget remaining is $765,458. Another completed project is the LAC Building C Nursing Program. This was completed in the fall of 2015, occupied for spring of 2016. Total budget, $11,650,000. Budget savings to date is roughly $795,757. And I think the last completed project I have is Building GG, Student Services Center at the PCC campus. It's a new 38,000-square-foot student services building. This was a design-built project that added emissions and records, financial aid, DSPS, EOPS, student counseling, and student health. Also, student and staff dining services. The building opened for use in the spring of 2016. A total project budget, $23,440,699, with a budget savings to date of $3128,191. Just noting that all expenses have not been charged to this project yet. And then, well, I have one more. I wanted to report that we had some additional work in Building JJ to move the alternate transportation program into that, and this required some DSA approval. So, we finished that up, and we completed construction September 2015. And that's all I have for my update.
Questions from the trustees?
I have quite a few questions. This was a great presentation, Tim. Thank you so much. Looks good. Just, you know, the other piece of your, of the item on the progress status, project status report. Now, this is not a criticism on my part for staff, but I've asked for this since last year, an on-time and on-budget report, to just see and understand how we're doing with the original intent of the project, the original budget, the original schedule. I see there's been attempts, and it looks pretty, pretty good. Certainly, I'd like to give you an A for effort. But I don't see, it's hard for me to tell as a reader as far as how we're doing with these budgets that we have. And I've been told that the Citizens Advisory Committee on Bonds supposedly look at this, and they track overruns in the timeline of the project being on time. How do I find that? Or perhaps you guys can help me navigate through your report on how do we track the budget and the cost overruns, if any? How are we tracking any cost savings, which would be great and rewarding? And then also, what are we taking, what kind of precautions are we taking to make sure we're within the schedule that we originally set out? And how are we informing the public so that they are aware of how their money is being spent and being monitored? If you guys can help me understand that, it would be fantastic. As it lays out, it just shows adjustments, which is tough to tell whether the adjustments will lead to project completion. What are the percent complete? And if we're going to be able to finish these projects within the current budget? Is it the original budget? Which is it?
Well, there's a lot of information, as you can see on that sheet. So, you know, I'd be happy, and I know Anne Marie would be happy to sit down and try to go over that, but again, there's a lot of information there that I don't feel that I can really answer at this moment.
Well, I have to tell you that I think that answer is not good enough, with all due respect to our staff. I think the public has a right to know that information. It's not just for the benefit of the trustees. I've asked for this information, and I'm going to continue to ask until I get an answer, because I think the public deserve to know how their money is being spent and how are we tracking it. And I'm confident we can provide that. I have every confidence in our staff, but I just caution us to make sure that, you know, we're not operating in a vacuum. This is for the benefit of everybody. This is the community's college. So, I certainly think, for the sake of transparency, as my colleagues have indicated, they're really striving for or they're committed to, it'd be certainly nice to see an on-time, on-budget report or a percent complete of these projects, so we know if we're going to finish within the budget and the timeline originally set. Maybe Anne Marie can add to that.
Right, so I'm having Myra pull up the report that you're questioning, Sunny, and I will walk through some of it. Maybe while she's doing that, are there any other questions on the presentation that's currently up that we can answer while Myra's working on getting that spreadsheet up?
Any other questions from board members at this point? I'm sorry, Jeff?
No, I just, as I was looking through this, because there are a lot of items in here. You're dealing with Prop 39, you're dealing with, you've got different categories or silos of funding that's going on. And so, that's why I was trying to follow, and I kept reaching over to talk to Anne Marie about it. And those, I was just going to say in response to that, on a specific project, I was going to say every change order has come before us on these projects that I know we've had to approve. So, it's not a question of whether they come to us or not. But, and I was actually trying to go through and find an example on that. But overall, what my other point to, as people have asked on many of these projects were, that you have more towards the end, when people have asked me in the past on, you know, finding some other sources, there are no other sources. When I, and this is really more direct to the bond that just recently passed, and that in the past, how the state funding would take care of community colleges does not exist anymore to where you can really do the projects. So, the bonds have really replaced that. And the beauty of that is your bond money, the tax on local property owners stays in the local community for a very specific project. And these projects have been outstanding, and they really have added to the, to the college, and even with the robotics program. And I was looking at the aquatics program. All these things are in the future and how we're going to do them. But as far as, every project comes finally to us, the bond oversight committee is really a cross-check, like our internal audit, external audits. But at the end of the day, the famous line, the buck stops here. Everything comes before this board, whether it be a change order, all of those take place. So, I don't want anyone to think that we don't, we, sitting here, we will get these items coming before us, and we have to, well, we discuss them and/or approve them. So, but it was, it's pretty remarkable, the things that have taken place in the transition of this college physically from what's taken place. And looking at the PCC campus and those projects, it's just remarkable, the latest with the nursing program. And again, we just, the system doesn't have the luxury of going to Sacramento, and, well, we do, but we compete with every other type of spending in Sacramento. So, it's either community colleges or bullet trains or other items that are all important. But it's just that the bond has allowed us to do so many things, and they've done exceptionally well. And of course, we always want to be transparent, and we always want to make sure we utilize the taxpayer dollars. And I've been very impressed by what we've had, we've seen in the past, impacts changes since this, the bond's passed in 2002. So, that was just more of a statement of congratulations. And I see now forums up that I've seen in the past, so I'll stop there.
Right, so this spreadsheet that we've developed was developed for the Board of Trustees in conjunction with the Board President in response to some of your concerns last year, Trustee Zia. And what it's doing, it's listing the projects that started after January of 2010. So, you see all of the project names. The project number is the accounting number that we identify it within our system so that we keep it separate. In the orange section is the budget. You see the original budget. That was the budget that was established with the 2020 Unified Master Plan that was approved by this board in 2007. The adjustments that have been made for the last nine years, as Trustee Kellogg mentioned, all of those adjustments have come to the board for approval. None of them were done without board approval. And, you know, adjustments are made for various reasons. It could be that, well, a lot of it was an escalation in cost. When we originally developed the master plan in 2007, that was before we put technology in every single classroom. So, these budgets do not, did not include putting technology into the classrooms, which is very expensive to do so. So, a lot of the adjustments that were made were because of escalation in costs that happened within the construction industry, as well as ensuring that we put technology into the buildings. And also, a decision was made to put new furniture in all the buildings when we opened up a new building, rather than putting the old furniture in that had been around for 20 years or so. We decided to add new furniture in all of the buildings, and so that added to the cost for some of them. So, that's what the adjustments are. You know, to give an example, if you want to look at the one down there at the bottom, the auto body diesel building, QQ and RR, that original budget was $9,295,000. When that budget was established, the only thing that we were going to do was basically make minor improvements to both of those buildings. Once we determined that we wanted to move the entire electrical program over to the PCC campus, that meant that we needed to demolish the building QQ and build a new building. And then, as plans changed, we realized that Building FF on the PCC campus was going to cost more to renovate than it would to tear it down. And so, we've made the decision to tear down Building FF, and we're moving all of those functions that are currently in FF to Building QQ. Those are huge scope changes to what was originally planned back in 2007, when that was designed. And so, that's why you see the adjustment of $11 million is to accommodate those scope changes and to build the two buildings. The current budget is $20.3 million. So far, we have spent $2 million. You can see that in the original master plan, the 2020 master plan, so I'm moving over to the right into the blue column, that back in 2007, we said that we were going to start renovation on these buildings in the '17, '18 fiscal year. We have moved up that construction schedule. So, this is being done sooner than we had originally planned. And you see here that we started construction in spring of '16, and we're planning on finishing construction in summer of '17. We will be monitoring to this budget of $20.3 million. And we will be monitoring to this construction schedule of completing in summer of '17, which means classes will start in fall of '17. So, each year, next year at this time, we will be giving the board an update on where we are with our construction, and we will show how much we've spent, if the budget is still at $20.3 million, and if we're still on target for finishing, so that classes can open up in fall of '17. So, this is kind of how this report was developed. You can see the original budget. You can see changes to the budget that have been made and approved by the board, as well as the expenses that have occurred. It shows what our original construction plan was of when we were going to start construction, and it shows where we are today. Now, in the green column of where we are today, those construction start dates and end dates are now in accordance with the 2041 Facilities Master Plan that the board approved just back on May 10th at their board meeting. So, that, those are now the new dates that we're going to be monitoring for on-time budgets.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vice President Gable, and I really appreciate you and Trustee Kellogg's great insight. And, you know, the problem I have, and I, and again, this is not a criticism on anybody's work. I have full confidence in our staff, and I've been called names for questioning these, some of these numbers, but I want us to be striving for even more excellence. And with that description and that kind of analysis or just overview, we're never going to be overrun, overran with cost, and we're always going to be on time, on budget, because we keep adjusting these numbers, and we keep pushing these milestones further and further ahead. What I like to understand is, and I am so, I'm a little bit fatigued with this argument that the change orders keep coming to us, and we keep approving it. Of course, we're the board, it's our fiduciary duty, but it gets piecemealed. And really, looking at the full picture of, are we meeting our targets? Are we meeting our schedules? Are we meeting our budgets? It's very difficult to tell from the information that's presented. And it's okay, we just need to communicate that if we're moving targets. I have a hard time understanding how we can ever be behind schedule or, you know, go over our project budget, because you keep changing it. That's my problem with this. So, somehow, just for the benefit of the public, it would, and also us as trustees, it would be nice to see at least, what's the percent complete of these projects that we're projecting or we have adjustments? If, you know, we have about $12 million we're adding, or $13 million we're adding for the multi-disciplinary complex A, A, B, B, D, D, E, E, and we're 20% complete, I'm going to have a hard time with that. So, that's where I'm going with this, not really, it's hard to tell what's the overview. What is the synopsis of our projects when it comes to time and when it comes to budget from what is presented? And it would be great if we can enhance it so that we can better understand it. So, if a community member asks, and I've been asked this many times, it's very difficult for me to answer this question, are we on time and on budget? And for our new bond, it would be, this is something I'd like to see as far as how we're managing our bond. I was a big proponent of it, but I am very keen on making sure that that money is spent right, and it's, we pinch every penny, and that's, that would help us if we get some sort of a report like that. I would hope that staff would look at this, and I would hope that my fellow colleagues will also support me on this to monitor it more rigorously.
Other questions or comments by board members?
I just have one question. You have College Center Building F, College Center Building E. Is that a typo? Or have you changed the scope of Building F?
No, that's a typo. So, Building F is the fine arts building, and the change in that is...
Isn't that the family and consumer studies building?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that building, the reason you see a decrease in that budget is because we are going to eventually raise that building as well, demolish the building.
Okay. And put something else there instead, or?
No, we won't be putting anything else there instead. One of the issues with Building F is the proximity to Building E. It's too close to Building E, so when we go to renovate Building E, we're going to have an issue with the fire department for accessibility between the buildings. And so, and the fact that Building F is so old, we have made the decision that we are going to tear that building down completely. We will make it into, you know, walkway, courtyard area, something like that. And all of the functions in Building F are eventually going to move into Building B, as in Boy.
Oh, okay. And then, because I was at the completion ceremony a couple of weeks ago, I noticed that the trailer is still there that used to be the duplicating room. And there's a sign that even says duplicating.
Right. And that, right now, is kind of a semi-storage area for the grounds crew, so that they're not having to pull all of the equipment across campus.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Wooton or on this construction update? Okay. Then let's, thank you very much. That was an excellent report, and there's a lot going on, and it seems pretty dynamic, too, that things change, and they seem to be changing for reasons, and you are addressing what those changes are. Let's move on to 3.2 Career Technical Education and Workforce Development, our presentation. Dr. Terry Long will introduce our Dean of Career Technical Education, and we'll get this report. Thanks.
Yeah, just let me, if I may, President Otto, let me do a quick introduction as to why we've got these two items together. Each year at this time, we do a report to the board about our CTE programs. And at various times, you are asked also to do reports on workforce development. But President Oakley had asked us to take a look at these two programs as they align and as they respond to the Chancellor's Office Task Force on Workforce Job Creation and a Strong Economy, which just completed his work recently. And I think our Dean of Career Technical Education will talk about that, she was on the task force. But there are 25 recommendations that came out of that, that work. So, there's a much greater alignment now between completers, that would be our credit-based programs, and skill-building courses, which are workforce development programs. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Long. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I just would like to take a moment to introduce our presenters tonight on our Career Technical Education and Workforce Development. So, first, you're going to hear from the Dean of Career Technical Education, Molly Smith, and she will be followed by our Director of Workforce Development, Melissa Infusino. And I just also wanted to mention that our Associate Dean of Career Technical Education is also in the audience. David, if you wave your hand. So, anyway, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Molly and Melissa.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. And thank you, Luanne, for that setup as to kind of the context. So, what Melissa and I have prepared for you this evening is really an overview of what it is we do here at Long Beach City College to support the economic and workforce development of our region, which is what we do in career technical education by definition as we create certificates and degrees that are, prepare students for employment. And they do that in workforce development as well, different links, and we'll talk about that in a minute. I'd like to frame it very briefly before I begin in kind of what's happened in career technical education in the last 10 years at least. So, the professional organization CCCAOE, California Community College Association for Occupational Education, has been working for about 10 years lobbying to improve access, quality, funding, and the perception of CTE in the state of California and the community colleges. About five years ago, we were lucky enough to get a chancellor, Vice Chancellor Von Ton Quinleben, who was our champion and who understood workforce and economic development. And she created Doing What Matters, which is, which organized us not only into regions, but also priority in emerging sectors, which we'll also talk about briefly. After she, we organized that way, then she... After she, we organized that way, then she started to assign resources to the regions and also dispersed competitive resources to fund different projects within reasons based on priority in emerging sectors. So, really what we're doing is we're trying to be better partners within our communities and use the public funds that we have to create the programs that are needed for employment within our communities. So, the big issue that we've had is that colleges are not producing enough, enough successful applicants, which is what we do, right? We populate hiring committees for middle-skill jobs, which is some post-secondary and less than a bachelor's degree. So, these, these efforts are to get us to align what we offer in the colleges, which is what we receive funds for with the employment again. We had the Student Success Initiative in 2014 and then there was a task force, the BOG Task Force, the Work on Economic and Workforce Development, in particular CTE, to align the policies and processes that enable colleges to better serve their local economies. And we came up with 25 recommendations. I was the representative of CCCAOE on that task force, the Career Technical Education Professionals in California. And in the documents that you were given, you will have the exec, excuse me, executive summary of the recommendations that we came up with. The ones that are really paramount are curriculum, career pathways, curriculum, faculty hiring and regional coordination, and of course, funding, which we'll talk about as well.